I've moved that we approved the minutes that were sent the night of the last meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Would you please make sure Barbara gets a copy?
Am I taking the minutes tonight?
Apparently you missed Daniel.
I did.
You guys wanna give her your name, maybe print it out? So we'll do the Union Street Capital Project. I have two questions. And I think Joe kind of answered this. This is $391,000. I got from the public hearing with the DOT that this was going to be, I'm sorry, year with...
VHB, yeah, the Design and设计.
Design and设计, hired by the city.
Correct.
Okay. That there would be like a million and a half our share of the total project, which is something like 5.7 million. I mean, can you give me the figures of what our share is?
Two point seven total.
What's our share?
It's under 1.4.
1.4?
Yeah.
But this 391, is part of that?
No.
It's not?
No, that's the construction cost. So during the public hearing that MassDOT made, they just stick with the state federal portions of their fund.
Okay.
That's the...
I, so, you lost me, but alright. 4.7 total is what the construction amount is, and that's, okay, so that's how much it costs. We are obligated to 1.4 million?
Of the construction cost?
Of the construction cost.
Estimated 1.4 million.
So there's...
To water and...
State gives us 300?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the 300, what Dan just said, the 391,000 is or is not part of what you...
No, it's designed.
This is designed?
Yes.
Oh. Are there others?
I'm just curious, why aren't they paying for some of the design? Why do we have to do it? Of course not.
No, the state federal funding that you're getting for the 3.3 is through the state transportation through the program.
Is federal too?
There's federal money as part of it, yeah.
Does not pay for design?
It does not, it is not eligible for design.
Now, does this design at all?
I'm sorry?
Complete the design of the Union Street corridors, what's written here?
Right.
Has it already been some designed?
Twenty-five percent.
Oh, that's right. So this completes the design and we get construction documents out of it, or we get it out to bid? With this design?
So with this contract, there's basically five design submissions that are made with MassDOT. Then they navigate this process. We just made the first one. And we had the public hearing.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent design.
Is design fair?
The next design submission is 75 percent. Then it goes 100 percent. And then it goes plans, specs, and estimates. This amendment will cover all through construction.
This will cover all design, even though you still have 75 percent to...
This covers 7,500 plans, spec, and estimate to get plans ready for MassDOT to hit the county's need.
Covers all design needs, including bid documents, etc.
The, we prepare the contract documents, like the estimate, specifications, plans, and MassDOT will prepare the bid packages. Our contract, this contract also includes part-time construction services. So MassDOT will have a resident on Union Street to oversee the construction. But we will be retaining under this agreement to do shop drawings and help answer questions or be available.
So part of your pay is coming out of 391,000?
Part of what?
Part of your services are coming out of 391,000?
The 391,000 is my services to finish the design and to carry it through construction. But the DOT is paid.
Can I have your card so I can properly write down who you are?
Sure.
In case you're not, you're not gonna be here next week, so. So Matt, you're gonna, you're basically the project manager separately hired by the state. DOT is gonna have a project manager on site too.
So I'm hired by the city.
City. You're the city property. Is that a proper term, project manager?
City, yeah, I work for the city. And I'm the project manager. I helped Dan and Joe carry this project through the state process, from design into construction. And then MassDOT will have a, their boss in the department will bid the project. They will have a pre-construction meeting. And they will have a resident on-site full-time to manage the construction.
Who are VHBs?
That has Hang and Bressler.
Okay, that's the name of a firm?
It's three people who started.
It's like a legal firm.
I know, seriously. I thought it was just Latin terms, right?
That's their last names.
They're from Rome, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, well, that's kinda good, though. I'd like us to have a manager on top of DOT. Not that I don't trust DOT, it is their money. But they're gonna watch, and you're gonna watch. And that way, we'll get an end result that's good.
That's right. And if Dan gets a question any step of the way, he gets the phone, he calls me. And there's the appropriate budget money for us to help assist and review.
So you're not there all the time, but you're on call?
That's right. That's right. I mean, we will review the necessary shop drawings, things for the contractor or equipment. And we actually come up with a final punch list, walk through the site, make the service constructed for the plans. And then we do a final walkthrough, and the traffic signal up here, the operations will be approved. The tech will come up and inspect that, and make sure it's functioning for the documents as well. And then we update the plans and give those to Dan, so he's got the most recent plans on the signal operations.
And Dan, you're on this all the time. Obviously, you're the city engineer, you got things to do.
It's more than part of the project.
Are there any... Go, this is just procedure. As we go through this process, if city council has questions, you go to you, Dan, and you engage him? Or do we go to him directly?
Joel, myself.
Okay. You'll work with you, and then you'll get a hold of it?
Yes. If you can't answer the question, you can get a hold of Joel.
Okay. And of the 390, not of them, but the 391,000, what is the risk factor that that number changes, 391,000?
So I mean, obviously, there's a risk factor with anything. We're projecting this to carry us through to construction, which is in two and a half years. And we'll carry it through construction, so this will carry you for the next two and a half years. We've got a pretty good track record of predicting, I guess, what the process will be. So I don't anticipate there being...
I would think that there's gonna be a contingency fund put inside the construction. So if you find a water main not in the right place or something?
Correct.
You could, you need more money, there's contingency funds for that. But we don't need design contingency. I know the school project has design contingency funds. Because suddenly, they have to redesign something. But you don't anticipate a need for that?
Now, the part of this first phase was to get all the approvals for the division setting the two-dimensional design. And now we'll get into three-dimensional design and running all the specifications, getting into the mini-grey, so to speak.
So this is considered phase two, sort of?
It's phase two of five.
I know, but...
It's, but yes, it's the second step.
We're paying for all the phases. Begins 3D designing.
It's the, yeah, it's the grading and the alignments, and it's not your traditional project, because all the buildings are at the back sidewalks, and there's a great change. We're gonna raise the road profile, so it's a little bit of a sidewalk career. So there's a little bit of a challenge. When you, you know, when you're doing any project, and there's no buildings at the back sidewalk, you can just grade out the grass, whatever you want it to be. Here, you're meeting a finished floor elevation of the building. So it's a little bit challenging than the norm, but I don't expect, at least at this point, any unique circumstances.
And I wasn't changing order in the first place. I mean, they didn't come back with more money in the first place.
And we could run into some, we've got generations of concepts and variations that we have.
Well, your experience tells me that you've done these projects before. This isn't your first rodeo. So you're able to get this...
My team did $100 million of construction projects bid last year.
Well, that's an important figure.
Yeah.
VHB, 100 million.
That's just our team. That's, I mean, we're a bigger company than that, but my team is 15.
No, where's your team? Western Mass or something?
So we do...
Worcester District?
We do projects from 195 all the way up to 195.
And this is, this is a Boston company, or?
Our headquarters is in Watertown. And, but we're, we have an office in Worcester, office in Springfield. I have part of my team's in Worcester and Springfield, but I'm from South Avenue, I live in South Avenue.
So you're very experienced.
We're doing this for 25 years. Twenty years of VHB.
Wow.
Don't look at that old, start when you were 10. So Val, I see you got the mayor to go with capital stabilization, which I appreciate for some of this. First question is, no, you didn't. I apologize. That was something else. I thought we were gonna try capital stabilization. That's my question.
We did. There was 271,800 on a capital stabilization.
Uh-oh, did I print the wrong one?
Do we have it as free cash?
You know what? I printed, I printed the one in the wrong package.
Wrong one.
Because they changed the stabilization. So it is capital stabilization.
Yes, it is.
There was a, if you recall, there was a amended package she sent out.
So this is what, what is, so it's 120 from retained earnings and 271,800 from a stabilization fund? Capital stabilization.
So how much was in capital before we did this? 3.5 or 2.5? 2 million, 269,000. And when we take this out, we'll be slightly less than a million.
99749.
And you're not worried about that, getting our bond agencies in a tiffy?
No, we, we can, we can do quite a bit more than that before we're below what we said we were gonna do. And we...
Well, we just started having a capital stabilization only a few years ago.
Yeah, I recommend...
And I always thought it was our stabilization account that made our bond companies happy, but...
All the stabilizations. Now I get you. No, I recommended it to Melissa, because it's a way to put money aside for...
It's a capital project?
Yeah.
I like it because retained earnings seems to have a few other projects on the board that they may have to deal with. If we took this all out of enterprise retained earnings, that would really hit that font pretty hard, right?
And they can, because it's not all water sewer lines, so they can't take...
Well, some of it is design of the roads and things. And that's separate. Okay, that's important to know, if you understand what I mean.
Right, I agree with you.
They couldn't have used all retained earnings, because retained earnings is specific to water and sewer. Whereas this is road design, grading, everything.
Yep.
Understand that, Omar. So if we did anything, it would have to come from stabilization or free cash?
Yes.
How much is left in retained earnings after this? You knew I'd ask, right?
Yes, I did.
And that includes the money we just took out for the outflow pipe? I mean, we already subtracted it.
Minus the 120,000, yes.
And the outflow pipe has already been subtracted?
Yes, we've taken out of it the sewer outfall, and then there was another 10,000 for the supervisors.
Contract. Okay.
And then with this 120, it leaves $1,348,678.
Okay. I know it's hard, but I'm happy we're using stabilization accounts, because that's what they're there for, to help us with capital projects, even if they're anticipated capital projects, that's what they're for.
And we had to put extra in there this year because of the debt. If the general fund debt without the school excluded and all of that is less than 2%, then the rest of the money has to go into either capital stabilization or OPA, so we have to capitalize on capital stabilization. And we'll probably have to do the same thing next year too, so we'll get reinforced.
So the non-excluded debt, if it's less than 2%?
Our general fund.
We are required to put general fund debt, not exclude, like the schools, that's separate.
Yeah, without the exclusion, without CPA, without enterprise debt, the general fund debt only is fairly low. And if that's less than 2% of the operating budget, then we have to put...
You have to put it in a stabilization account?
To make up the 2% into either capital stabilization or the OPA.
Should we put it into the new tax stabilization account too, if we wanted to?
We could.
I'm just saying, DOR rules-wise, that's good news.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. That's good to hear. That I didn't know. I didn't know we were mandated to move it to these accounts.
No, no, it's part of our debt policy. I mean, our financial policy.
It's not state mandated, or it's just...
No.
Oh, okay.
It's a great best practice.
It's a great best practice, but okay.
Is there any...
I'm done. You have a... I don't have any more questions. I think this is a great project. I don't know where we're gonna get the 1.4 million, but we have to do that. But when will construction begin, just out of curiosity?
October 22, right?
22?
And this next design step, we have a real critical phase, and we're planning on working closely with Dan to, you know, dial in the water and sewer programs and figure out a way, there's, I know you've done some video and things like that. So they would look for ways to do cost of debt measures, maybe knock that price down. One of the best, the things that, having DOT doing this, is that, you know, hopefully, that our estimate on that will be a little bit high side for your piece of water and sewer.
Is that a percentage we're supposed to put in? So if the whole project is 4 million, not 4.7, we have a certain percentage?
No, it's, you're paying for the cost of water and sewer, because you have an enterprise fund to pay for that. The state won't pay for that.
So the 1.4 is just dedicated to water and sewer?
Yeah, I mean, this is just another part of the pipe.
So, I mean, that number could go up or it could go down, but I'm confident that it'll stay the same or go down.
Is that, once you get into the dirt, you see, oh, this pipe has to be replaced, or it doesn't have to be replaced?
We're gonna video all this.
How do you, you do like x-ray video?
Or give up the sewer pipe, give it to the camera.
Oh, sewer pipe you can, but can you get into a water main? So they're pretty big, I guess.
A lot of it's cash, it'll probably work.
Because it's too old.
And one of the cost of that, the way to do the sewers, we have talked about this, is just doing supply and of some sort. And that could be a real cost factor.
Are we using PVC or non-metal piping for these pipes? I'm just curious.
I think that's what we're gonna use, is for the sewer.
Plastic.
Yeah, yeah.
Water, no.
Dark one.
What's dark? So last one, I'm trying to get that. So our fellow counselors, I'm gonna guess you know, are faced with the same problem, or 50 years.
Right. And one of the things we're gonna be doing is part of this next, we have two lines out there now, 84. So we're gonna look at raising the consolidation of line.
So that's all wrapped up in what you're gonna be designing, looking at the as-is, and figuring out within that one?
So the video, that's a great question. The video is part of this design process?
Uh, no, what you're doing is...
You're doing it, but you'll give that information. But that's before they design anything, they're gonna have a lot of information on what has to be replaced.
Dan, is there anything on the, we have to do it list for DPW that can be snuck into this project around Union Street? Do you have anything that's, like, problematic?
You mean the Tygen bond?
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, it could be related to Tygen bond or anything else, but while you're in there? The meeting that's in 40 minutes.
Oh, this one, oh, this, oh.
In other words, all those projects that were targeted, are any of these things part of that list?
I picture it's probably in the water and sewer and UCH, so you'd have this. Although we may have excluded it from the list, because we made the project.
Yeah.
So, I have to go back and check the actual list to see if that's...
But anywhere there's...
It's some of the oldest in town, so we wouldn't want to include it.
I mean, it'd be interesting to know if it's part of this, and if it's on that list, should it come off? Or is it really truly still on that list?
I think they would have, if they were smart, they would have taken it off the list, because that would put it up to $24 million. We have a funding, a funding place for this. I thought of something, I forgot about it.
I guess this is one, is you're aware that the numbers in here for the 1.4, that you feel that's coming in addition to whatever that is? So if you pull it out of that, you have 1.4.
When it rains, it seems to pour.
Very good point. Either, either it comes from that, which means you do more...
If you're pledging for something, it's not a priority.
We do fewer projects than they are thinking they're gonna do, or we have in addition to raise money.
We need to hit the lottery. Can there be a city lottery that we, like, every, every city contributes, and then we win it? That'd be nice. Honest to God. Hundred-year-old schools, hundred-year-old water and sewer lines, I mean, it's just...
One of the original 13 colonies, I don't know if you're aware, but we all know.
This guy Paul Revere was here.
I know, there's a lot happening.
Well, what he told me, what Joe told me, yeah, some of the sewer lines are made out of wood. I went, well, that tells a lot.
But I also heard that's not poor, as long as they stay wet, right?
Yes. I'm not running into a wood...
Somebody was telling me, I think, it's called...
Yeah, but what if there's woodchucks?
I can't. Alright, so...
I have no problem with this. Omar, you came late, but do you have any questions? So, Dan, I guess you'll have to come to the meeting. Joe can come too, but you can't come, right, Matt?
At this point, it's, I'm kinda on the fence.
Is it Wednesday, Wednesday, 6:15?
6:15.
I probably won't know until like next week.
Alright, well, only because what's really interesting is what you've told us about all of the work that you're gonna be doing, that this pays for the entire project, even though there's four more phases to be done, or whatever. That this pays all the way through the end. And I like that. And I think you could explain better than I what your role is, but I'll ask Dan to do that, or Joe. He can't make it.
Yeah, I need a time limit, I'll have to do that, maybe make connection.
Alright. Okay.
Motion to make a recommendation to approve the Union Street...
Capital project.
Capital project for Holloway appropriation, $391,800 from capital stabilization 271,800, retained earnings 120,000 to capital project 391,800.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both. See you Wednesday. Mention to Joe.
I will.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for the explanation.
So all the other items on the agenda have already been spoken to with regard to the police and police department cruisers that were going on the next...
So can we just go through them before you adjourn?
I'm not adjourned, we have the CPA thing to talk about.
Okay, so I just wanna go through this, so 93...
Are you here?
I was not, that's why I wanted to make it clear to myself.
I don't have my notes, I'm sorry, but I can answer as best I can.
Yeah, this'll go two seconds. The police cruiser was 93, 626, 93. You guys approved that, and we're having a public hearing on Wednesday.
Wednesday. That's the purchase of two cruisers, and they're hybrid cruisers. They finally got some interceptors that actually don't cost a lot more. Omar was here.
That is police academy tuition.
No, 93, you said two cruisers, so I was going to...
Yeah, I missed one. It's, it's academy stuff, it's vacation pay, so that's that.
They had a lot of people, a lot of people leaving the department, some of whom you know. Some, one person whom I was shocked, convicted, not necessarily unhappy.
And, yeah, okay, so, what'd you say?
Two resign, and then we had a retiree, and there's also tuition.
Sick time, the tuition, all that. And then there was another similar amount, 93, 869, 20. For the two cruisers, one is...
They're both hybrid.
Hybrid.
They're both hybrid.
They're both hybrid?
Yes.
Does that mean partially electric? What is the hybrid portion mean?
It means parts, it is half-electric, half... They don't run out of power.
It generates its own power by being not on the battery, or whatever?
In other words, it won't, it won't be such that they'll run out of juice, because they have a motor back.
Okay.
That would be important.
Alright, and all three of this...
And he's not worried about their performance? He thought they were great?
That's why, no, he said that. So these are the three things that we are public hearing, okay, got it?
That's how you were...
I'm all cut out now.
Okay, CPA, senior exemptions. I am pleased to announce that the CPA committee, at my request, supported this unanimously. It's important to make sure that the council knows, we're talking about number one here. This is for you. These are the exemptions allowed, we're talking about number one.
Yep.
That we can't, I know the word senior exemption was put up, but this qualifies for low-income housing or low-moderate income senior housing. It has to do with a broad spectrum of people, it's not just seniors.
Yep.
And we're not allowed to edit that. It has to be all or none.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I, I'm with you.
Okay. But their main concerns, which we had to, I had to stifle, because it's not there, I want to get a support now. But it's very legitimate concerns, is who's gonna administer it, how is it administered, and what is the financial impact? All of which, I'm gonna say this publicly, the person who sponsored this should research for us, Madam President? I mean, I'm not gonna get on the low radio and find out what this is gonna be. I think we need to know what kind of burden we're putting on the assessors, because as I understand, it's the assessors who are doing this.
Yeah, no, I wholeheartedly agree. I think, I think what I'd like to see is a proposal presented to us of just what you've talked about, how this will function, what it will look like, who are the principal players, what is the impact of that, all of those things. As well as, and then, you know, we can, or the sponsor can, talk to what that looks like from a city perspective. How much might people be impacted? Are we talking about 42 people, 197 people? What's the amount of money that the city CPA would be, would have to pay out?
And that kind of research will take a little time.
Yep.
But it goes, kinda goes to our rule. It should have, in my view, been part of, maybe some research should have been done originally before this, but I don't wanna go there, but I, I don't feel it's our job to go do this. So Madam Cousin, I'm asking you to come to Council Kozinski and see if he's willing to get this research. He also is more familiar with assessing.
Well, I'm disappointed he's not here tonight, actually.
I was gonna ask him to do this, but... What do you think, Omar? Do you think he should be doing some of this research?
He should.
Yeah. Because administering it was a big question the CPA had, and then what's the actual cost? Now, Stuart down at the CPA Coalition in Worcester said, it's not much money, most of the communities that have done it. And the other thing that helped him is, I think Holybrook is doing it. The people who are doing this can give you information as to how it's administered in those cities and towns. But he said it wasn't a lot of money. But the optics are great, we're giving somebody. And the other thing that's important to note, you can't, let's say you had, you applied for it, you qualified, but suddenly you had some money comment, and you can't keep getting the senior exemption if you suddenly had, didn't qualify anymore, because you have to reapply every year. Which was something CPA committee asked about this lawyer.
Yeah, so these are the, the questions I would have of Council Kozinski are kinda what you were saying. So what would this look like if we enacted it? How would it be administered? What would the financial impact to the CPA be? Rough estimates as to the number of people who might be qualified, and how much that would impact? I, I think we need all of that to have a better assessment. I mean, I think it's great.
It's a great idea, I wanted to do it, yes.
We've answered the question that, yes, the CPA supports this, and we know it has to go to a ballot question. And now it's just, what will we be proposing to the residents to vote on?
Well, it's important before we vote on it, what are we getting into? And the other thing that's very important to me, and we'll talk about administering, I'd like to hear Lori's side of it. She has a part-time staff member down there. It may not be a lot of work, and she might be able to say right away, oh, it's nothing, we don't have that many people who qualify. But I still have to ask her, she's doing abatements, I talked to her today about something else. They're still doing abatements, they're still, I mean, they're not getting them in, but they're still doing them. They still have, they have till April 1st to get them all done, because they have hundreds or more. So I wanna make sure that, how does this, does this have to say deadline? This is add to the abatements that have to be done, this is an exemption? Anyway, I think that's important.
I will talk to Council Kozinski and ask for more.
I don't think we should bring this to the city council until we have full information.
I agree.
I will keep it on old business until we, I wanna make sure he knew that we couldn't edit this, it had to be everybody. So, which is good, there might be some low-income people that could qualify. I guess we're done.
Um, what do we wanna do? Do we have any plans to start to talk about salaries and segments?
I wanted to let that go for a little bit, because Barbara has to help me, she's in...
Until we get done with the election?
Are you here for this? Because we already approved your money.
Reluctantly, I might add.
We did not. I had to explain to her everything.
Oh, I've already talked to her.
Can we save this for the council?
He knows I'm reluctant. Yeah, we're only recommending.
I'm waiting for my rope to go over the whole council.
Exactly. Phil Mitchell will be at that one.
I think Salem is gonna kiss you, because you went to hybrid, so don't worry. Omar's already done that, right?
Hi, note, are you coming to the budget meeting with me, with the mayor and Jeff Tompkins?
I'm glad you brought it up, because I almost texted you and I said I was gonna talk to you. What time is it?
I want to say 2:30.